Good afternoon. Welcome to a special meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 3:03 PM on November 28th. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members.
Asadirian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brodmann.
Here. And may we have your report, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on November 22nd, 2023 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, thank you. And our first item?
Our first item is Community Development Regarding Alex Theater Annual Report, A Note and File 12-Month Alex Theater Update and Provide Direction Regarding Utilization of City Days at the Theater.
Okay, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Brodmann, Members of City Council. This first item is going to be presented by our Deputy Director of Community Development, Tom Arzad, and Mr. Williams of SAS, who is the current operator of the Alex Theater, is also in the audience available to respond to our questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. Today's report is a recap. Let me get this going. Today's report is a recap of the Alex Theater's activity and goal attainment over the October 22 to September 2023 period. Aligned with the council's goals for the theater, SAS Entertainment's mission is focused on community, to provide multicultural venue that's available to the local organizations, visibility to attract top talent and quality artists to catalyze a vibrant downtown, and bringing financial stability to the theater. Highlighted community events include the Concert for Artsakh, Glendale Community College's Arts at the Alec, inviting students to perform and display their visual arts free of charge; the continued residency of the Glendale Youth Orchestra; Schoolyard Rap, bringing 10,000 kids to experience urban music and dance performances throughout the year; and hosting a number of local dance studios' performances. Even as Alex continues to modernize and make the theater more attractive to top talent, SAS Entertainment has been able to secure big names such as the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame band, The Zombies, jazz icon Kenny G., and Latin music legend, Alvaro Torres. Financial stability was one of the three major charges from the city council, and the Alex has been achieving that by reaching new audiences, drawing in the Gen Z demographic with engaging performances and partnerships with co-presenters that attract the youth. The theater is also embracing their emergent identity as the global music center of Southern California by bringing in artists from all over the world. As the theater continues to serve as a community hub, the council requested more concise direction on how groups can request use of the theater through the city's 12 rent-free days. Staff in the theater feel the following parameters will ensure continued financial success for both parties and ensuring the city-sponsored productions meet the interests of the community. We suggest that requests are for non-weekend dates only, that they must be received 90 days prior to a performance, that they cannot be requested after an agreement is already signed with the theater, must be a previous user of the theater with at least 50% capacity in previous shows or a reasonable expectation of over 700 attendees, and no more than one request per organization per year. As part of the agreement with the theater, a theater maintenance ticket fee is collected with each ticket sold and provided to the city to offset some of our investments. This year, the revenue to the city is over $200,000. This revenue is directly tied to the success of the theater, and as improvements outlined in their 10-year capital improvement plan come to fruition, and the theater continues to grow in visibility by attracting top performing artists, we anticipate this revenue to grow year after year. Just to demonstrate this success, the theater has had 28 sold-out shows this past review period, and this is a notable increase from the 15 they had the previous year. This concludes my presentation, but I'm available to answer questions by the council.
Any questions? That's where we're going.
Thank you for the presentation. There was an email that was sent to us regarding a donor wall. I don't know if you saw it. I think it was sent to a few of us. I'd like to ask, what is the prospect of getting something like that placed to where it was spoken about? And then, of course, I asked staff, and I've received a response to the other part of that question, which is there is a dysfunctional water fountain on the first floor, and I understand that's the city's responsibility to have that repaired, so I'm hoping that our staff will get on that to make sure patrons to the Alex Theater have access to the water fountain.
Mayor, council members, we have informed public works who handle our maintenance for the theater about the water fountain, so we expect that that will be repaired soon. In terms of the donor wall, we need to do some more research on that. We did collect some documents from Glendale Arts previously. We were not aware at that time of the donor wall information, so we need to do some background research on that, see what they have, and then figure out how we can put that back into place or some other alternative necessary.
Thank you, Mayor.
The others?
I have a question. Yeah, this is regarding the update on the Alex Theater, not necessarily on the city days at the theater, but I was looking over the sold-out, or I'm sorry, the events list, and I have a question about the ticket prices, and I wonder if you could answer some of them for me, or one of them for me.
Certainly.
Okay. In particular, the 4/15/23 event, Willie Cherino, which you had 468 attendees.
Yeah.
Now, I understand that that same, there was a same performance in Downey, and it was two nights, and both nights were sold out. And the next comment was that the reason that it was not a sellout here in Glendale was because the prices were raised so high that you did not get the attendance. So I guess my question is, how are your ticket prices? How is your schedule of prices determined?
Sure.
And why would one place, Downey, have cheaper tickets than we do at this? What's your formula, I guess, for pricing?
Sure. It can be kind of a long answer. If you want me to start with the Willie Cherino show. The Downey Theater capacity, I believe, is 300 some seats, if I'm not mistaken, so their 600, if they sold out, is slightly more than what we sold, but not that much more. That's the first response, is that, you know, apples to apples, it's still in the similar ballpark. That show was partnered with Carlos Aurelia Presents, who is one of our regular Latin music partners.
In Downey?
No, Downey has this show here, yeah, that we did. He brings in a lot of the Latin talent that we do, and the ticket prices are typically, for all shows, a collaboration between the promoter, which is usually not us. Most of our shows are still rentals. We are doing about 10% of this last year was our presenting, and the rentals, they pick the ticket prices completely. That's part of when you rent a venue. It's normal for those ticket prices because the promoter is the one making the deal with the artists, and it's all part of that deal structure. So I had nothing to do, we didn't have anything to do with the pricing for Willie Cherino. That happens outside of our purview in our contract with the promoter.
Is that the case for all of the productions?
For all of the rental productions, it's literally in our agreement that ticket pricing is up to the promoter, who's renting the facility. For our in-house, but let me say this, when they are picking ticket prices, it's in everyone's best interest to sell out, right? The promoter, the artist, everyone. So everyone's trying to find the right number, you know, and so it's a collaboration typically between the promoter, the artist representatives, the agents, everybody kind of gets in this email conversation of what do you think about this? Does this look like a good scale? Well, maybe we should go down, maybe we should go up based upon data from other venues. So it's like a really normal process in pricing tickets that everybody goes through, because everyone wants to sell as many as possible.
Well, it just seemed like, I know we had some Glendale residents that went to the theater here, to the Alex.
Sure.
And also, I think they went to Downey, and they found out what was...
The difference in ticket pricing. I'm actually completely unaware of what their pricing was for Downey.
Ticket pricing and attendance, and attendance, two sold-out nights.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the theater size. I don't know about that, but... Absolutely. Go ahead.
One additional point on that. The facility fee, how much is that? Well, it's $4 for all tickets over $20. For under $20, it's $2. But we don't see a lot of tickets under $20. Okay, so would that $4 have been, does Downey do that? Most venues have facility fees for the exact reason we do, to pay for maintenance and upgrades. Of that kind of, that number? It's less than some of the, it's less than the two downtown venues that I, my company's involved in. Ours is less, you're saying? Yeah. It's slightly less. That's how I picked it. I wanted it to be slightly less than our primary competition, which is more of the downtown venues. Okay, I would just think, because I don't know what the difference is between the Downey price and ours. I was just curious whether that facility fee could be part of the reason there's a difference. It certainly adds to the price. It certainly does do that. Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Did you have more?
No, I think that's it. Have we, I'll ask this to Mr. Galanian. Have we ever held city events on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday?
Councilmember Devine, not to my recollection, unless it was an April 24th event that falls on a weekend.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Devine, I also looked up the Downey Theater capacity at 738 seats.
Sorry about that. I wasn't sure how many it was.
That's a lot different than 300.
Yeah, no, I thought it was much smaller the last time I've been there. It's been a while.
But it is, that is half the size of the Alex. Alex is 1,400.
Yeah, but we only sold one night, 400 tickets, so that's, that's kind of questionable to me.
Yeah. I could give some commentary, if you'd like, as to why I think it didn't sell so well, besides the ticket price, because I don't think that was the primary thing. Our promoting partner had a major health issue, and he wasn't able to market it as much as he would have. And I think that that's the biggest reason why it didn't sell as well. We were all expecting more out of that show.
And speaking of marketing, when was Kenny G. at the Alex? Because I didn't know anything about that, and I'm a fan.
Kenny?
Kenny G.?
It wasn't that long ago.
November 2nd.
Well, I was a fan. I've been...
It's November 2nd. We're all fans of Kenny G. So I'm sorry you didn't know about it.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, marketing, do you put these in the Glendale news press? Do you announce these?
The Glendale news press is overly priced for what it is, significantly overly priced. My entire meta-buy on a show like Kenny G. is like a half a page for once in that newspaper. It's just financially, it makes no sense.
Wow.
I mean, maybe there's a, maybe there's a way we could get a deal, where we put like our calendar into that newspaper, and they just have like a thing. I've asked him about that, and he's just not gone for it yet, so. I did follow up with him, because you asked me about that before.
Oh, okay.
It's just overly expensive for what it would give us.
To Charlie.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we use our technology to advertise the Alex Theater productions, so that residents that go to our website know what's there?
They're not listed on the website. Their calendar is not listed on our website, but Community Development is working on launching our own social media, and we would be able to advertise it there. And we do have the Economic Development Newsletter, and I think it is periodically included, but maybe we can make it a major feature.
And Economic Development, she sends out newsletters, and shouldn't we be, you know, making these events noted to the public, so we all know what's going on?
Councilmember, we also, to our best efforts, and depending on the shows, we try to include that in the city newsletter as well. We'll pass that along so that it gets included as well. We haven't done that every time, but we have attempted to do that as well, in addition to the Economic Development one.
We do a weekly newsletter, and I guess we could make sure you're on it, because we do it every week, to patrons and people who subscribe. We are, I will say this, that I, if there's anything I want to improve on this next year, it is the marketing. I do think that there's more steps that can be made. We will have our new website finally up, and our social media is growing, but I'm going to be making a big push in this next year for marketing and visibility.
Brilliant idea.
Totally. Oh, that's where we're going.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is in regards to overall return of attendance in comparison to pre-COVID numbers. You have a number of venues that you run. How do those numbers compare? Is it based on location? Are there other types of events that are slower to recover? What's the general trend that you're seeing, and where do you see that trend going in the post-COVID world?
COVID was a huge thing for our industry, 18 months or so without live shows. So we took over the Alex only three months after our first live show back from COVID. So I think that the overall feeling we all have, people in my position all over the city, all over the country, is we feel like we're still in a bumpy place where it's hard to predict what is going to, how things are going to go. Ticket buyers aren't buying on the same frequency, they're not buying at the same time, like, you know, that you buy a week before, you buy a month before, two months before. That has become less predictable. Obviously, the first year after, everyone went on tour, and everyone was trying to do shows, lots and lots of shows, and we had a lot of really good patrons. Patrons showed up. They were like, oh, if we finally get to go back. This last year, the second year in, felt like a big dip to everyone.
Including your other venues?
Yeah. Yeah. Things that we would count on being sold out just weren't. So, and it's not as if no one came, it's just that it wasn't like, the demand wasn't as much. So, yeah, it feels like still a bumpy road, you know, is what it feels like in general. Obviously, I think we're trying to figure out how to stabilize it more, and how to reach to, you know, how do we get to a place of where we were before?
Okay, and then, related to this question, how much of that is connected to the size of the venues versus the acts? I mean, is like the Hollywood Bowl or the Greek Theater experiencing the same types of lulls?
I, you know, I don't have a look.
Obviously, like Taylor Swift is not, or Beyonce is not, but...
Obviously, like a global phenomenon, right? And I think that ticketing and ticket fees came into a lot of, you know, everybody's looking at that right now. We're looking at it, too. You know, we actually have adopted what we call an all-in ticketing policy, which is that when you go to buy tickets, you, typically there's a face value, like it's $45, and then you click through to the end, you've got three tickets, and you add them up, and then there's, oh, these fees get piled on. At the end, you didn't expect it. So there's a movement, and we're part of a group called NEVA, the National Independent Venue Association, and we're trying to push towards the elimination of that surprise and including fees all in one price. So all our new shows are going ticketed with that, with that. So, I don't know, I'm getting in the weeds a little bit, but there's a lot of effort towards it. And when it comes to the Bowl and the Greek, I don't have their numbers in front of me already. I mean, I hear from colleagues
Yeah.
that everybody's just sort of hoping we get back to where we were. The first year was boom, the second year was like coming down from that. This next year, I guess we'll see.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Well, obviously, my concern is for the Alex, but I also am concerned about generally the industry or the biz, as we like to call it here in Southern California, because so much of it is interconnected and related to both the strikes that we had, the film industry. I think California, and specifically Los Angeles, is one of those areas where the entertainment section of the Times is just as important as the front page or the California section, because that's where we read how movies are doing at the box office, and how they're doing relates to everything else, including all the way down to our local theaters.
Sure.
So I'm grateful for your insight and responses. Thank you.
I appreciate your attention to the, to the what's going on, very much so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the report. Thanks for being here.
Sure.
On page three, you have, with at least 50% capacity in previous shows, or reasonable expectation of over 700 attendees. How are you going to gauge that reasonable expectation?
I ask people, it's part of our booking inquiry form, what their expectation is of attendance, and then engage in conversation with them about it and where that would come from. I guess if this is published, and people are all like, oh, I have to hit that, then maybe they're going to fib a bit, but for the most part, usually what people tell me they're about to do, it comes to fruition. So...
Okay, so I mean...
I don't know. I don't know how to make it.
It can also be that someone just says that they're going to be able to have a sold-out show, right?
It's a very good point.
I just, I don't feel comfortable with putting things on paper that are kind of up in the air and can't be gauged.
Sure.
I don't, I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but, I mean, you can have it on there just to have it, but I feel like there's no way to measure that. Our intention with this one was that we would like to see a performance that has been with the theater before, that we, our intention with all of this is that the city's sponsorship is going towards something that the community is interested in seeing. So if we look at a previous show and we see that they had 50% capacity, we know that there is interest in seeing the show. We know that the community is invested in this show. With the reasonable accommodate, or the reasonable expectation, our anticipation with that is, well, what if there's something that the community is excited about, but they've never produced at the Alex before? So we didn't want to exclude someone that had never had a performance at the Alex before, but if they had, we would want to see that there was 50% capacity. If they haven't, I mean, Miles and his team are pretty keen to know what is going to be successful or not, and I think that is the, you know, if you have a lot of interest in your potential show, then we would expect that you'd have half there.
Okay.
Ultimately, with this formula, does it come to council? Do these decisions on the use of these days, they do come to council?
Each of these requests would be presented to the council. The last time we presented something, council had requested a little more clarity on how these things come before them, and clarity not only for the potential requesters on how to request it, but also that something that we bring before you is something that is of interest to the community.
Okay, so at the end of the day, we can make our own judgment, I guess, if we think something really isn't, isn't that interesting, and isn't, you know, we're suspicious about claims that it's going to get, attract 700 seats. I guess we could just always decline it. They would have to fib to you. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because that brings, looking over the list before Mr. Galanian, I look at the Glendale Youth Orchestra. You know, how do we handle that? They have 280 people that show up. That's not 50% of...
I'm not sure they would be requesting days. I give them an amazing deal. They barely pay anything to do their shows. I value what they're doing quite a bit, so...
I'm sorry.
I give them an amazing deal. I don't know if they'd be requesting the city days because of, I don't know, they're paying less than they ever did, and, yeah, I mean, we've even given them an even deal so that they don't have any ups and downs. It's just a flat rate, and it's really, really low. So I don't know if they would be, but...
Well, I'm saying, would they be subjected to this criteria?
If they requested one of the city days?
Yeah, they're not.
But they're, because Miles had said he values the production that they bring, so that's why they already have a good deal at the Alex. They're a reoccurring performance there.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, council members, you obviously can reserve that judgment as well. We're just trying to establish a threshold and kind of a floor, if you will, of what we bring to you. We will likely still bring things that will be below that, and it will be ultimately up to council, whether or not you would like to use those days for it.
Mayor and council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Najarian, just wanted to add that it would be really helpful to have a set of criteria, so that we can, or staff, or Mr. Williams can decline based on established criteria, some of these requests. As you know, if we bring them to council, we have to write a staff report, we have to agendize it, and then bring it to council, and it takes time away from other things that we can do. In the absence of criteria, we'll have to bring to you every single request. Just a heads up.
Hi, Miles.
Hi.
I'm generally pleased with the management of the Alex. This is your third year now that you're ending second?
Ending the second.
Going into the third.
Correct, correct.
And I'm especially happy that you helped produce, or you did produce, the Concert for Artsakh. That was very important for this community, and of course, the, you know, I want to say the residents of Artsakh, I don't even know if I can use that term, now perhaps the refugees from Artsakh. And that really, I think, showed a sensitivity to the community and what we find important, so I'm really happy that you did that. What's coming up in the next month? Nutcrackers and choirs, and just a brief...
Well, we have nutcrackers that are coming up. We actually have our first, well, we have one this week. We have a couple of longstanding companies that are Armenian companies that do holiday shows, Armenian fairy tales, and Taleen, and that's coming up this month still. We have a couple of the, we have a band called Earth, which is not holiday music, which is sort of like for a more rock and roll crowd. We have been doing more sort of for rock and roll crowds, which is one of the things I said I was going to show up with. So we have a couple of those coming up as well. We have, I think, I think we have 19 days this month where we have shows or rehearsals, and we have, one of the exciting ones, that's their first time, is actually an Indian dance nutcracker, which should be really cool. Yeah, yeah. So that's like an exciting one that I made a deal with.
Anything for the aging boomers in the year ahead?
We also have Catherine McPhee.
Rock, any good rock groups?
Well, we have, I mean, our big, our big show this December is Catherine McPhee, who just sang at the Macy Day Parade. It's the 23rd, Paula, of December.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Catherine McPhee, I know.
Yeah, and that is also with, Take Six is a vocal group that's also singing in that show. So that's one of our big, kind of, like, I don't know, our big celebrity one for December. That's with a group called the Pacific Jazz Orchestra, and they're going to come an annual for us, at least one show a year that they're going to be doing. We're going to try and do as many aging boomer shows as we can.
Is it?
And I don't need to remind you, and I know you're aware, but the Alex really brings quite a bit of life to that stretch of Brand Boulevard, where the patrons go out, eat, have a cocktail afterwards, maybe do some shopping beforehand. So you really play a very important role, and I have no, I have no complaints at this time, and I appreciate your candor as you speak to us, you know, unplugged, if you will, and I wish you the very best, and all your acts, and people that rent, and the residents of Glendale and beyond who will come in to see a show.
Thank you, Laura. I've been really, I'm going to use the word blessed, to become a part of the brand community there, you know, meeting the other business owners and having them, you know, excitedly ask me how many shows we're having this month because their business goes up, you know, and I've started to feel a responsibility to that because of just how much of a difference it can make. So it's been a blessing that I wasn't totally expecting, because some of the other venues are different, and this is, definitely has its own flavor. I really am enjoying my time here at the Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Speaking of other venues, are there things that you think that we could be doing differently to help?
To help with?
Downtown, to help the restaurants, to help that collaboration? Are there things that you're hearing from patrons, from business owners, community members? I think this is a good opportunity for us to also learn about, what are some policy changes we could be making that would help bring more life to downtown?
It feels like that's opening a box that I could talk on for a long time. Maybe we can have a meeting about that?
Sure.
Or ask me to join a committee for something that is helping down there, because, sure, I talk with the other owners, and we have lots of ideas. So I'd be more than happy to be a part of, like, idea sessions about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Just one more question. Just one, one more question is, what's the nonprofit rate or what are the discounts offered to the local nonprofits? I know we've had that discussion here before, but I've had a number of folks approach me inquiring about that. So I think it would be good to be on the record.
Sure. The nonprofits are typically being given a discount of 25%. The, the weekends are hard to do nonprofits on because of, we really need to make the revenues on the weekends. And they're the dates everyone wants. Everyone, when they call, they, they, they want Saturday, they want Sunday. So that's like hard to do, you know? So we haven't been doing a lot of nonprofit shows on that. The other thing I'm offering certain nonprofits when it makes sense is the ability to kind of take a risk with them. So I, I lower their rent down to half unless they sell more tickets. So if they sell more, then the rent goes up. If they don't, then we're still only half price on that. So that's another way that I found that can work well. And I do that more on the weekends, so. But yes, I know that there's some nonprofits that haven't been able to get dates.
Okay.
Our holds are five deep right now into June, every weekend is we have.
What does that mean, your holds are five?
We, we place holds on the calendar of shows that are interested. And you typically have like a first hold, second hold, third hold, fourth hold, that sort of thing. Most of our weekends are four to five shows already in talks to do for the weekends, all the way through the summer. So January is going to take a dip like it always does, but after that, February, we are back at it. So, yeah.
Bless you.
Okay, so I've held my, my questions and comments at the end. I just have, just one thing for you and then one thing for staff, just to say, you know, I do appreciate that I see you around a lot. I bump into you all the time, right? You're, you're, you're there. So that was a bit of a worry, you know, that is he going to be here? Is he going to just kind of be very hands off? So you're here, I see you at, where, Urartu on Wednesdays and I just kind of seem to bump into you a lot and I appreciate that.
Sure.
Just question on, on the, the money side, that you mentioned this 203,000 general fund revenue. Is that, first of all, is that this calendar year?
That's from the, the October 22 to September 23. So because we're doing the annual reports, not on calendar years, it's, what's reflected here is not the calendar year, but it's October 22 to September 23.
Okay, and how does that compare in this, I asked you in the, in the briefings? Could you give us a forecast versus actual? Because when we went into this two years ago, I guess it is now, we had these projections of, you know, what we were going to be generating from the facility fees and how much that was going to offset the cost that we were taking on. So where are we? How have we been doing?
So when we signed the agreement, it's a 10-year agreement and our projected revenues were 6.5 million, which would be $650,000 a year in ticket fees. But that was, it's not per year, that's not how we structured it. We did structure it over the entire 10 years because when SAS came in, they did note that there was substantial improvements to the theater that needed to happen before they could continue to attract top talent. So within this fiscal year, we anticipate making a good number of those, those improvements to the green room, the backroom area, which would give top talent a space to be and a space that they'd want to be. So we, we do anticipate year after year that this ticket fee revenue to the city would increase.
Okay, so it was on average 650 a year and we are running, I mean, this 203 is about a year, but how, you have the year before?
The year before was less. It was the first year they had taken over and I don't recall what that number was.
Wasn't even a whole year.
Yeah.
Because it took six months on interim before we were collecting fees.
But we knew that this number would ramp up as those improvements were made and as SAS Entertainment was able to make a name at the theater and bring the theater into the, the modern world of where performing artists wanted to be.
So do we still think that 6.5 million is going to happen?
I want to look at those numbers and see a good answer for you, you know? Because some of the things that, I felt like the 200 was a pretty good second. Or like, it's only a year and a half since we had the contract, really. So I thought that was not bad when it came to my expectations. I'm happy to take a look and, and put together like a more sort of a projection, if you'd like.
Okay.
You know, I'm happy to do that.
I think it would be useful. I mean, it wasn't our only consideration, but one of the things that kind of kicked off this whole discussion about changing operators was we didn't want to be putting money every year into the venue. We thought, you know, this was going to be financially less of a burden on us.
Sure.
If it isn't, it's something we should know and, you know, be, be upfront about with the community, so. So I would like to know.
And the capital improvement plan that we had projected, the entirety was 3.2 million. That was our investment. We also maintained the infrastructure of the building itself, which is outside of that. So the HVAC systems, you know, one of the first expenses we had walking in was the deferred maintenance on the HVAC system. It was $75,000, you know, within the first month of, of SAS taking over. And that's, that's the infrastructure of the building. That's things that need, that needs to be maintained and that's outside of that 3.2 million in capital improvements. So we can look at how those numbers would compare to each other, the expenses versus the revenues.
Okay, I think it would be helpful. I mean, and no knock on you guys and how you're doing and, and.
No problem.
But, but, you know, we did, this was presented to us two years ago. There was, there was kind of a financial model attached to it and I think it's important for us to see how we're doing. I was a little skeptical and I expressed that at the time, that these numbers were going to materialize. So I'd, I'd like to see how we're doing.
Of course.
Okay, all right. No other questions or comments? We do have a decision to make whether we support the, the set of guidelines for the. Yeah, thank you. For the, the city days. Does somebody want to, want to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, and then that's all we need to do? It's a note and file, so maybe.
Well, it's a note and file and direction, so the direction would be to basically approve these guidelines, right?
So a note and file and approve the guidelines?
Approve the guidelines.
Okay, and we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, so let's have a roll call on that.
Councilmembers, Azad, Darian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kazakyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item, please.
Our next item is community development regarding update on the entitlement and code review process. A motion to note and file to update regarding the entitlement and code review process and provide direction on additional elements to review and develop alternatives to improve.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council. We're just going to go directly to the Director of Community Development. Mr. Calvert will make this presentation and ask for your feedback and if there are any additional elements that you'd like to be added to the review process.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. Kind of a prefacing statement to this. When I assume the position of Director here, one of the major charges we had was how do we improve and fix our entitlement process? We'd heard many comments regarding the speed, the consistency, the accuracy, communication, things of that nature. We've gone through a number of different steps already to start improving that. We brought on, brought on board a consultant to start a process that would lead to recommendations that may be larger improvements, larger scale in terms of code or even internal operations. So this kind of really is the first step in that. I mentioned that early on because that was the charge, was to improve that process, improve that relationship with our customers and our applicants, how we can move these projects through in a more timely manner. In this part of the work, what we did is we interviewed what we consider frequent flyers, if you will. Applicants who do come to us on a pretty routine basis on a varied scale of projects. We wanted to get that because we wanted to understand where their concerns were. Some of them that we've even heard from some of the council members is those, that kind of feedback was relayed back and forth. What I would add to that is not, that is not the end of our engagement at all. What we're looking to do here is get some feedback from council at this point and then start the process of looking at things that are maybe code related, process related, that have a broader impact to the general public, at which point we would launch a much larger public engagement process, if you will, so that we're vetting out those things that are improving, or impacting the public. Our reason for interviewing these were because we want to understand what those challenges were specifically with those who were pulling permits with us and who have gone through the process. That was kind of the intent and the goal behind that and to also get perspective from our own staff, newer staff who had perspectives from maybe other cities, some who are actually private sector as well, and others across different divisions so that we understand their working relationship. What I'd say about the report that you have in your hand now, about 90% of what's in there is internal facing. A lot of things are operational, their checklist, it's how we work across divisions and various departments. These are not recommendations for what to do. This is where we're looking to get input from the city council. So if you see something on that list, this would be a great time to tell us that's not something we're interested in investigating. Anything we leave with today is not set in stone as a change. What we want to do is go back and investigate these options, see if they work. Look at some of the things in regard to code, other processes. Come back with a report to council and understand what the implications of some of those are. And then set out to analyze what kind of changes we can make and then what those impacts are in that engagement to the broader public. So this is something that's going to come back to you many times over, over the next couple of months. There are two things in there that were rather large, though. One was design review and other were objective design standards. There's nothing in this report that's indicating to eliminate the design review process, the board, administrative, none of that. We gave an opportunity to our applicants to express their opinions and feelings regarding that, much like anyone else in the general public does. We just wanted to get their perspective. We recognize the importance of the DRB process. There may be opportunities where we can either help refine or define their scope to be more efficient, but also give the tools, which is probably the most important part, to the design review board to ensure that they are working within their purview and being the most efficient and effective as possible. The other part I'll mention is that there also, there's also been commentary regarding the objective design standards. This is something that's come up many times. This is something that was part of our downtown specific plan. This is something recently adopted by Tropico. There's been a certain level of consternation, certain projects that have been cited. Mind you, those were all density bonus projects that we had a minimal level of control over. And those projects also were not subject to objective design standards. They were actually subject to subjective at that time. When we're taking up this conversation around pursuing potentially, not set in stone, objective design standards, I would like the council to remember that that is exactly what the revised DSP was. And to this date, of all projects that have come from the downtown specific plan, all of them have received a minimum of a 4-1 vote from the council. I would like to bring that up just because I do think there's significant value in that and that it's something that we would like to continue that discussion investigation of because they have assisted in proving, in providing results that have been satisfactory to the council as well as the community. So I just kind of lay that out there as a foundation before we go in. Again, the expectation here is that you give us feedback on what you would like us to investigate or not investigate and certain code elements as well. That was kind of a key part. So again, the scope of work here was to identify a means to improve the entitlement process and really the whole system. This looks at everything from building to safety, planning, GWP is part of this, fire, public works. Those are all things that we'll, we'll also touch on here. The goal here was to improve the speed. We've heard of the time and the delays it's heard of projects to get through the process. The consistency, the, the feedback that we're providing to the applicants, but also the feedback of the outcome, right? The results of the work, ensuring that it's meeting the expectations of the council and the community. Also to improve the workload of our staff. That's something I'll, I'll touch on and focus on here because there, there have been concerns and issues regarding overall workload, but then also what does that workload do in terms of detracting from being able to focus on those big, important items that, that come before us? And overall, to just simplify the code and process. Make this understandable, make it digestible, make it into a manner, whether that's handouts or the actual code itself, where anybody can pick that up and understand what it means and what they need to provide us. Now, with the, with our consultant team, there's essentially two phases of work here. The first was the interviews. As I kind of outlined, this is why we interviewed who we did to get their take and their perspective from having gone through this process, pulling permits, various scales, various frequencies, and also those who are working with these projects and kind of their interactions. From today, as you mentioned, we would like to go into a second phase. Not the final phase of the entire project, but that second phase of working with our consultant where we take your feedback and identify opportunities where either the code or the processes can be improved in a manner to remove either delays or maybe there are codes that we don't even need anymore or can be simplified. Parking is one of those things that comes up quite a bit. We're seeing changes at the state level. There may be opportunities for us to be able to simplify that so we take out unnecessary steps with some of our applicants. Now, from the interviews, what we had was essentially five primary themes that emerged from this. The first one was design review. And when we say that, that means the design review board, that means administrative design review, things that may be exempt, a number of different kind of varying scales, if you will. The second was regarding staffing, kind of the silo of different divisions or departments, overall culture and approach to work and leadership. The third was the length of the review process itself, how we document things, how we formalize those processes or maybe how we're not. The fourth was customer service, especially in a outward facing element in terms of our counter, our phones and how we work on projects. There's a little bit of overlap, in fact, with what I'd say number two when it comes to that. And then the last bucket there would be kind of policy and code changes. And I'm going to, I'm going to go through a number of different highlights from each of these categories. I'm not going to go through every single item on those, in the list that's in that attachment. But if there are ones that I do not acknowledge here that you would like to have a broader conversation on or would like to remove from consideration, I would, I would encourage you to do so at the end for feedback. So primary theme, number one, really focused on design review. And really, this is about defining the scope of the DRB better. And from what we looked at, how do we provide them the tools that they need to make sure that the conversations stay on topic, stay within purview and stay relevant to that project, that context, that location? There were some comments regarding projects that could be or should be exempt from DRB. That would be one of those code changes that we can take up as a broader conversation if there's something you would like us to investigate. And then the concept of objective design and development standards to make things a little more predictable in terms of how to approach projects or potential solutions. And one of the other elements here was the education sessions and materials for applicants. And this can come in a number of fashions. We've looked at this before in terms of our checklist, how we can update those. Maybe there are educational videos. We've actually produced some of those before regarding various topics. But what means can we use to put that information out there front and center? Make it more accessible and make it more understandable? So that new time or kind of first comer applications, first time coming here, know how to approach some of this or can at least readily find the resources that they may need. But again, making everything very kind of clear and apparent. And the second bucket here focusing on, how do we approach this for more of a productive and solutions oriented approach to projects? We have often heard, whether it's planning and safety or even often building, that there's more of a culture of no. A culture of just saying no and not providing direction on how to come up with a solution. That's something that we've already started working on, which I'll, I'll dig into a little bit later on. But that idea of how do we help them get to a solution? You'll hear the term get to yes. That does not mean get to yes to everything. The intent there is how do we help that applicant get to a solution? And it may not be what they came in the door with. It may be something very different and they'll have to accept that. But our staff is working with them in a productive, solutions oriented manner to get them to a solution that is tenable for all, all parties. Us, the general public and the applicant themselves. We heard comments about hiring more staff, that's something. And the third bullet point there, salary study and workload analysis that I'm going to touch on separately from this. That is something we would like to propose going forward as kind of a next phase. More cross-training between divisions and departments. So that each understand better what the other does, right? The, the building and safety professionals better understanding the design review process so that maybe when they're conducting inspections, they can also look at certain things or look for certain things that our planners would. We've heard comments that there seems to be this increase in number of inspections that are needed. That kind of cross-training could help maybe mitigate some of that if our professionals are working across different divisions. Looking for third-party assistance. We currently use that now for building and safety, but given the volume of work that we have, the number of things that we permit, our current staffing levels, is that something that we can, can consider expanding on for other services that may be necessary? And then some of the other comments that we heard, both from internal and, and external, and you can see the percentages breakdown in the exhibit, is that how do we celebrate those wins more often? When we are making successful, you know, completion of projects, major milestones, things that we're accomplishing that are significant so that it's also recognized that while we know that there are times that council hears from applicants about delays, challenges, problems, that's not the only thing that we're working on. And that was one of the intents actually of us bringing forward that annual report is to bring some perspective on the volume of work that we bring through as well, as well as what gets accomplished. Number three would be the consideration, consideration of a one-stop shop and enterprise operation. This one I'm also going to dig into a little bit later on because there's a lot of nuance and detail that I think that is important to this. But having worked in a familiar environment before, I think that. environment before, I think that it lends itself to a much more efficient process, one that's also much more, I think, fiscally responsible. We heard comments about extending our counter hours. Currently, we operate at about seven to twelve, but being more of an informational counter that could be open longer. How do we reduce the review time by other departments? That's something that's going to tie back into that first bullet point that I'll touch on. Working with our staff on project prioritization, right? How we take some of those smaller projects, move those up, knock those out of the way so someone who maybe has something very small is not stuck sitting for months behind maybe a larger project and how do we get some of those things done? Our memorialization of feedback to our applicants. That goes back to some of our process and how we improve that. How do we document that so that when our staff is looking at something, it's not a almost de novo review when they come back, right? They have a checklist that has been followed, they have responses from our applicants, and then they can pick up their review, recognizing that there may be only a handful of things that need to be looked at again, rather than almost treating a review from, let's say, from scratch. We're looking at consideration of overhauling our pre-application process. I believe there was a letter submitted last night that actually touched on this a little bit, is that our pre-application process is asking for a lot of information. These are people coming to us with an idea or a concept for a project. We ask for a lot of information. By doing that, we're essentially sending them very far down a path that they may not be wanting to back out of, and that becomes, it creates tension. We're asking for what I would consider to be the equivalent of a seventy percent drawing package for an early-stage idea. We scale that down, we meet with them earlier, and we get that feedback early on so that we, they're not overcommitting to things. They better understand our process and we're able to get in front of them in terms of changes or modifications that may be needed to that project, and they haven't over-invested with their own architect or their own project itself. And then expressing instant permits. Some of those are already starting to come back. We're having those returned. We know that when Intergov launched, we lost some of that because we didn't have that over-the-counter passing paper back and forth. We have since started to return with that. Solar permits is a good example. There are also other considerations about having pre-approved ADUs, things of that nature that we can investigate. Bucket number four, that is very Intergov-heavy. A lot of improvements on kind of the backend of that system. I'm not going to go through all of those. We have a team between our ISD team, planning and building and safety and several others that regularly go through this and look for kind of a rolling cycle of improvements because we knew that was going to roll out with some bugs. That was absolutely going to happen. It was unavoidable. We hear from our applicants and the feedback they give us and how we can keep making that better, and that's something that's just going to be a continued process for us. Providing customer satisfaction surveys. So how do we provide, do we provide good customer service, good communication? Were we solutions-oriented? And being able to get that feedback and improve, hold ourselves accountable, but also kind of continuously look at what we're doing and how we can find a way to do better. We heard comments about our website updating that. We've heard that before on other kind of sub-pages that are there. How do we improve some of that information? That goes along with improving checklist, things of that nature, and how we disseminate that and how we make it accessible. Overall, the project review times, which we know that is largely why we are here today, why we're having this discussion, is how do we cut that down? FAQs and fact sheets, that again kind of goes hand-in-hand with that information and those checklists that we put out there, ensuring that that is readily accessible to applicants, to residents, so that they know what takes a permit and what doesn't. How much do they really need to provide us on a smaller-scale project versus maybe a larger one? And giving them kind of more clear information in terms of how to go through and work with our process. And the final bucket, and this is one that we are really looking for substantial feedback from the council here, is the idea that the code itself needs to be updated and simplified. There are layers upon layers upon layers. There may be things in there that are conflicting. There may be things in there that are antiquated and outdated. And ultimately, when we get to that point of this meeting where council is giving that feedback, I want to kind of put out there again that if there's something you want us to look at, that doesn't mean it's going to change for sure. There's a number of different variables we need to consider. Impact to the broader aesthetics of the city. Does it require environmental review? Is it something that we can do quickly? Something that we can modify or completely remove? And us investigating that per your request is not a commitment that it'll actually make that change. There's still many other layers that we'll go through in order to complete that. And then also calibrating our development standards with the allowable densities. We heard that discussion recently with the multifamily development standards. How are we possibly inhibiting those from meeting maximum potential? Or how can we improve it so that they can at least approach that better than what was kind of occurring before? Some examples of that, and again, I'll bring these slides back up when we get to that part of the conversation, but an overhaul of the parking requirements. We know that that's often an impediment. We're also seeing changes at the state level that may make some of them unnecessary. Reduce what is required to go to the DRB or codify exactly what needs to go to DRB. Sometimes this is left up, left up to staff to make that determination if they cannot come up to a solution with the applicant. And if we codify that, that leaves that subjectivity out of there. That provides a better, I guess, more insured timeline, if you will, because it's going to stop that kicking back and forth. And yes, that is a project that just has to go to DRB, and that's how it is, and others will not. But how do we remove or modify certain departments or divisions from review? What we've seen is that when a project comes in, it doesn't always need to go to every single division or department, but the way that's set up, it does find its way, routing, and sometimes it's left sitting somewhere, waiting for someone to take a quick glance at it and move it along. Some other ideas that have been put out there, again, I mentioned the pre-application process, but the way that we pursue our EIRs in terms of projects that need environmental review, right? We do an RFP every single time. We could consider doing something like having a handful of consultants who are on-call, much like we do with our building and safety services, that we can tap into for these projects. We estimate that that could cut anywhere from three to six months just because of that process it takes to draft an RFP, get that on the street, get the responses, and then make our selection. We think that could save a lot of time there. And I mentioned before the possibility of pre-approved ADUs. I wouldn't, you know, temper the expectation on those because we do have kind of a unique topography here that could bring challenges to some of that, but it is something that could still be very much worthwhile looking at. Now, to the concept of get to yes, again, this is really about a solutions-oriented approach. This is something that we have already started within our department. In fact, we've anointed a handful of our team members to take this into some of their staff meetings so that they are focused on that. And again, it's not get to yes to anything. It's not get to yes to what the applicant is asking for. It's a solutions-oriented approach, and it's not about our staff telling people no. It's about helping them, assisting them, guiding them, offering them good customer service to get them to a solution that is ultimately a yes at some point, and a yes for all parties involved, as I had mentioned earlier. Some of the other things we have in progress, we had met with a series of stakeholders, I would say it was back in April of 2022, just to get some of their early feedback, and we looked for some early wins. Council has already given the blessing to some of those, and those are in progress in terms of changes, and you'll see that come back here in the next month or two. One of those is concurrent review, that the applicant has, can, at their own risk, submit to both planning and building and safety. And if that design upholds in DRB or whatever stage that they're in, they can have some of that review within building and safety already moved along. What we do is we have a hold harmless agreement with them, and then if things change, they have to go back and change that application as well. But it can help shave downtime, especially for a smaller project. Some of the objective design standards are in motion. We see that with Tropico as well as the multifamily. That's already been completed with downtown a number of years back. Expressing instant permits, as I mentioned, those are on their way back in. And now we're starting to look at how we update our handouts, our checklists, and our guides. For example, our window guide is nineteen pages long. It does not need to be nineteen pages long. It's very difficult for any average novice to pick up and try to understand what it is that they can and cannot do. In fact, our new building official, R. Sargizian, he and I had a nice little redlining party one day in our office and just kept striking through everything, and we believe we can get that down to a handful of pages. And I mention that because that is about making this information more accessible, easier to understand. It's not about modifying the requirements. It's about distilling down to what it is we need to process the application and to be able to efficiently work with those applicants. Now, next steps, a couple of things I would like to touch on before we have the discussion on what else council may want to see thrown into this bucket and what they may want to potentially cross off. One of the things that we would like to pursue looking at is turning the entitlement process into an enterprise operation or what would be a one-stop-shop. Part of our challenge here is that we have a couple of divisions, obviously in community development, that look at these applications. We have people in GWP, we have people in public works, we have people in fire. What we would like to do is come up with some sort of solution, and whether all those staff members are part of the community development team and that entitlement review team, or if there is some sort of joint supervision, that would help us a lot. It's difficult for me when I have a project that may be stuck over in GWP or fire, and I've already had conversations with all three of the leaders of those respective divisions and departments, so they know I'm not doing this to throw them under the bus. But if something's stuck there, essentially I have to call up Mark Young and I have to ask for a favor. Can you move this project up your priority list? And in reality, that process for GWP, their focus is generating power, not necessarily always reviewing drawings. This is a pretty small potatoes kind of task for them. How can we make that more efficient and not have these long delays? We've been working on other elements in terms of getting information from them that we can put into our GIS and land management systems so that we don't have to wait or request it from them. But then the goal would be to continue or to study and then continue into what we would consider to be a full-cost recovery program. We would take the time to analyze what it is in terms of how many hours it takes to finish a certain type of application, hours from our planning staff, our building and safety staff, the fire staff, everybody who's involved, and understand exactly what that true cost is. It may be more, it may be less than where we're currently at, but to understand that. So we can also be able to collect the data that's needed for us to establish those timelines that I know this council has also brought up as a priority, right? So that we can tell someone it's going to take forty-five days. I can't do that for a number of reasons right now because I need to be able to collect the data, but I also need a full staff to be able to do that. So what would happen in this process, and this is a system that I have worked with before in prior cities, and essentially we could move applications out in no more than maybe fourteen months regardless of the type, scope, scale, size, is that an applicant would come in, they were provided all these updated and improved checklists, the updated improved pre-application process. They would come in and whatever that fee may be for the application, they would make a deposit. Our staff will track their hours during that process, and what happens is our staff, one, we can also hold them accountable. If I have a staff member who's taking fifty percent longer than someone else, I can now try to figure out why, and I can make, I can take the necessary steps to rectify that and improve that. Do they need more training? Maybe that's not their expertise in that kind of project. I can reposition. But I can collect that data, that information that way. But also, if an applicant does a really good job, and we saw this frequently over and over and over again when I worked in Bellevue, Washington, is that the applicant may end up getting a refund in some regards, right? If it's a $10,000 application, maybe they gave us a great application and we didn't have a lot of things to kick back and forth, and they only used $7,000 to $8,000 of that fee. And again, true cost recovery, transparency in terms of the time it takes us to review things, also transparency in our expectations with the applicants, and all of those aspects, whether that's fire, public works, GWP, building and safety, planning, are in some capacity either supervised or joint supervised or all located within the same team so that we can break down that kind of silo element. Ideologically, nothing would leave the first floor of the management services building in terms of an entitlement process. That it all could live right there and all of these team members can work together in terms of completing projects. Another aspect of this that we would like to move on immediately would be to study our peer cities. I had mentioned this during our annual report of taking a look at the staff counts of these other cities, taking a look at their staff pay, taking a look at the number of things that they permit. We do need to calibrate this. Our number and volume and quantity of work that comes in the door is not calibrated with our staff. It is too much, is far too much, and at some point this will be, if not already unsustainable, if we do not make some sort of modifications. What we would like to do is be able to look at those cities, see what they have, and then we can go back and look at our permits. And do we really need to look at all of these things? Or is there a simpler way to do it? Or do we just need to add more staff? We would like to find out what that answer is. But right now, the volume of work is there, the number of staff that we have, even with all vacancies filled, it is not something that is going to remain sustainable in terms of creating an efficient process and efficient system. And it's really about calibrating that workload and that number of permitted items, balancing the city and the, or the city council and the community's priorities, but also making sure that this is a healthy workload. I will say that we have lost several staff over and over and over again who have gone to other cities for lower positions, better pay, and a lower volume of work, and these cities are often much smaller than us. And we will continue to have that revolving door if we don't understand where that linchpin is and how we fix that. That is something that we would like to start studying immediately. So what I'd like to do from here is I would like to get the feedback from the city council in terms of are there aspects of the code or any of these processes you specifically want us to look at? We will put that in a bucket. I would say cast as wide of a net as possible. We're not committing to making these changes. We're committing to studying them and seeing if there's an improvement or benefit that would come from it. Upon doing that, we would return to city council, provide those results back, things that we could achieve in the near term, medium term, long term, some things that just can't be done, some things that are going to need a broad public engagement to understand what those implications are to the community. As mentioned, they're engaged with the public, and then develop that work plan. That first phase would be to fix the internal operations that need to be, improve them there, and the second would be looking at those kind of code and process changes. So I'll stop there. Again, feedback from council regarding the codes, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think what I'd like to do is go to the speakers we have. Do we have anyone on the phone?
I have one caller.
We have one? Okay, we have three in-house, maybe four now? Okay. Let's do that, and then we'll do our questions. Okay, so we'll start with Rick Lemo. And we'll give everybody three minutes.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, and our city manager and city staff. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Greater Downtown Glendale Association in regard to what's been happening in community development over the last couple of years. There is an attitude that replicates what I've discussed many times with city manager Galanian over the years. Instead of hearing that the city is a scary place for an entity to do business, there truly has been a sort of shift in attitude, and now it's how can we help or how can we help you find a way to yes? To that end, I'm here to praise and congratulate the department on the feedback that we and many other businesses are invited to give. I was one of the participants, actually, starting about two years ago, I think, so I've had three or four interviews already. Having been involved in the city for well over twenty years, nearly twenty-five years on different processes, it was really very interesting, hospitable, and comfortable to find out that the city really did care about what we thought. My concern in the past has always been that this city has done what many cities do. They listen to what the residents say about certain process, which is always important, except the residents use less than ten percent of what we're actually discussing. You're seldom going to find a resident come through with an entitlement project or wanting to start a business or a restaurant that we've coaxed away from another city into our district, and they say, you know what? In a smaller city, it doesn't take me two years to get approval. So I'm glad that we're finally tapping into business. A recommitment of an already exceptional staff, along with the acceptance of criticism and fresh ideas, made me feel that Glendale government is becoming to be more of a partner committed to the success of a business. In the past, respectful endeavors to gather input from citizens have been admirable, but again, left business out. Glendale business members want to follow reasonable rules and a reasonable process, and we are excited that this examination is taking place. It's just a review of what the process is, but it's a great first step. And by involving business owners as well as property owners, we're involving the key stakeholders most affected. Of course, once proposed updates to coders identified, I do think it's time to bring in citizens and get them to weigh in, along with business, because we are living here and working here all together. I have twenty seconds left. I want to go to another subject very quickly, and I'm going to again ask to provide our illustrious police department with a lot more support and a lot more resources. Your Downtown Glendale Association is being hammered by what is becoming a homeless situation streaking towards out of control. We have a very difficult time keeping help. They're going to other cities where they're not having things thrown at them and not being attacked. I just want you to be aware that's what our concern is. Thank you.
Okay, Betty Porto.
I feel, I feel your pain. I mean, this, what he just went through is a huge project. I got half of it, my head was ready to explode. See, he speaks like a machine there. But just coming from, you know, simple people that have been in business in the city forever and ever, we've gone through all of it. From down breaking the streets to try to have this guy not be lynched when the boulevard was broken up. So we have accomplished a lot. Look at this beautiful, thriving city that we have. And I think everything that he spoke about, all the simplicity of the codes and everything that he's proposing is what we need because as a person who's always on the floor talking to people, the biggest complaint I get all the time is, oh my God, opening a nightmare in Glendale is, opening a business in Glendale is a nightmare. Six months later, we don't have permits. I see people like that every day as I walk to work. So that's a perception that the city has that I know is not always the case because we've been accomplished, we accomplished so much in 40 years. But we need to change that. And I think everything that he's talking about, all those news ideas about simplifying, about giving people information that's simple to digest, like perfect example, I'll never forget this. When we first started in Glendale, we got all excited. We got a sign saying that we're going to have extended hours. We had no idea. Two days later, we spent all this money on the sign. Two days later, somebody comes by and says, you gotta take that sign down. You gotta go down too. And we don't know where to go, what to do. So what we need is an area somewhere in the city where people can go there and be directed and make it simple for them to understand and to be able to say that Glendale is, you know, a city that's pro-business. And again, I take my hats off to you because all these years that we never, look how much has been happening in the little sleepy town of Glendale where there was not even a skyscraper. And now I'm walking around with all the buildings. So kudos to you guys. But we need to simplify, we need to make it easier to digest. Like I said, I don't know how you're going to digest everything he just told you because it's huge. But at least we're stepping on the right direction. And thank you so much for hearing us out and let's go Glendale.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy Yurka.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and staff. That felt like a celebrity sighting. So we all love Portos so much. I'm Kathy Yurka. I'm a board member of the Verdugo Woodlands West Neighborhood Association. Our concerns with the proposal before you begin with a lack of involvement of any stakeholders, but apparently a dozen designers and applicants. That is a quote from a speech I made to council at roughly 10 o'clock at night on Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, when you heard an item, a proposal to modify and improve zoning code and entitlement review process. I also asked at that time for outreach to and input from a wider swath of stakeholders, including neighborhood groups. Here I am again, now at 4 o'clock on November 28th, 2023, asking for the same thing. We are residents, we are constituents, we are customers and users of the services under review. We are frequent commenters on projects who are familiar with the design guidelines, and we live with the result of these processes. You heard from staff and someone who I think is very sincere and who got three to four interviews as part of this process, whereas we got none, that you don't need input from residents until later in the process. Why? I pointed this out, you know, 16 months ago, that we wanted to be heard. Phase one is over. Talking with stakeholders is over. You're supposed to make concrete recommendations today and move on to phase two, which is to study, to evaluate those recommendations that were solicited and evolved without input from many people who have a deep investment in this process and who have concerns about it. And this is not to say, I don't doubt that many of the recommendations are sensible and helpful. I agree with a lot of what Bradley Calvert said, but I do feel that shutting residents and representatives of neighborhoods who've asked for input, you know, so long ago, just shutting them out of this process until, you know, once the die is really cast, I don't think that makes a lot of sense. You know, we'll come forward and we'll comment on projects. And we hear, well, this has been in the works for two, two and a half, three years. You know, we can't, you know, in good conscience at this late date, tell, you know, the applicant, no. I do think that the longer that work goes on, you know, there is a kind of impulse to move it forward. And I just do think that there should have been a solicitation of feedback from residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Alan Malikian.
Good evening. My name is Alan Malikian, architect, local architect, and I guess a frequent flyer. I am an applicant and as well, I've been involved with the city of Glendale for over 25 years, both as an applicant and as a designer review board member. So I've seen both sides. I've experienced all kinds of different planners, deal with different planners, planning directors. And I've seen both sides that I, and I saw faults and repairs that I think it needed. What Mr. Calvert and his staff has done and what I've seen, I think it's commendable. I was part of the interviewers. And one of the issues that I've faced in many years has been consistency, working through the different departments, the help that we needed, as well as the accuracy and responses that we would get. I think what Mr. Calvert and the team has put together, I think solves a lot of these issues and a lot of the concerns. I know that stakeholders, and we talk about public, but I think the people that are actually using the system has a better sense of what the issues are rather than the public coming and commenting on the day-to-day activities that occur. I don't know if you guys ever gone through the permit process? Just so you know that two years ago, when everything went online, it was chaos. But everything kind of calmed down, everybody worked things out. But one of the simple problems that we would have is we would have everything processed and permitted, but then during the permit process, we would have to get GWP. And that had to be hand carried during COVID. We would have to come, carry the plans over to the other side. And somehow, we would have to find ways to connect the departments. And this is the problem that I think we're trying to solve, not issues that our public has not been given the input. And I think what Mr. Calvert is trying to do is solve this. And I think, I think it's, you know, go to yes is a great idea, but obviously, everything has to be done properly per code. Everything has to be done correctly. And I think the good application reward, I take pride of the plans that I put together when we go in. Because as I was sitting as a board member, I would always make people pay for their mistakes. I would definitely make sure that they would have to go back and fix. And as a person that I would sit there, I'd make sure my office abroad plans in as accurately as best as possible. So hearing that I'm going to get rewarded for that, that's fantastic because it's just a hard work and you encourage people to do best they can. Thank you.
Thank you. And our callers?
Yes, we have two callers. Our first caller is Randy Stevenson. Randy, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dratman and city council members. My name's Randy Stevenson. I'm the president of Stevenson Real Estate Services. My office is located 1111 North Brand Boulevard. And I, I guess as well, I'm a frequent flyer. I'd first like to thank staff for endeavoring to understand the public's experience with the city department. Additionally, working to aggressively pursue improvements to the process is to be commended. I'm calling in today to urge council to move forward by directing staff to proceed with developing the action plan based on the recommendations in the report. The entitlement processes as currently organized are exceptionally onerous, inefficient, inconsistent, and take an intolerable amount of time to complete. If you elect to delay the improvement process in search of more input, it will only bring greater delays to those wishing to bring exciting and beneficial projects and businesses to the city. Whether you know it or not, and whether you are willing to admit it or not, Glendale is currently known as a municipality to avoid. Staff has the feedback it needs to effectively develop the plan for implementation of the necessary modifications to the entitlement processes. Please enable staff to move forward. Let's get working and make Glendale the best municipality in which to live, work, and as important, be an attraction for those looking to bring exciting new projects to the visitors and residents of Glendale. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Damian Sullivan. Damian, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thanks very much. Thank you, everybody, for letting me give commentary. I am very, very positive about the proposition to find ways to improve the process of how developments and things go forward. I would also very much echo what some speakers like Kathy Yurka said. And please, please, as you give your suggestions and your guidance, I would very much like to ask you to continue to very much involve the community and the public because they are the people who are the residents who make up the city, not the builders and developers who in many cases don't live in this city and are not, you know, is invested. The stakeholders, people who, people who walk up and down the streets of this town, like Central, this concrete corridor that we now call it, would give you very, very specific feedback, I think, about the nature of one item in your proposal that Bradley's put together, which is coming up with standards for what type of buildings Glendale approves and builds, something that already has brought up with PowerPoint presentations showing other cities that have aesthetically much more pleasant and attractive types of design. And I think we, involving both the public and taking a stronger look at what kind of projects are we greenlighting? What do we want the legacy that's left on the street here to be? That should involve everyone, definitely architects and design experts. And I think we should involve more of them and take the advice of knowledgeable people who can help improve the look of what, you know, we should never have a street that looks like that middle of Central ever again. I mean, that's a stain on our city. And we're stuck with that forever. And it's just a, just an unpleasant barren landscape to walk around. So please, please, I think you should find ways to improve the efficiency for your applicants, but please do not cut out the residents who are the residents and the citizens of the town who live in this town and will continue to have to live in a walking guilt. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that's it?
That's all.
Okay, let's hear from the dius. Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Kasakia.
Thank you. For me, I have, I'll have some follow-up questions as well. I think I want to hear from the rest of my colleagues. But ultimately, I commend the effort that you're embarking on. And for me, the key word is certainty. I think we need to have certainty, as well as we actually, two terms, certainty and clarity. And I think that's the frustration that many people feel. I understand the concerns of the residents and I do hope that we do include residents and neighborhood groups, key stakeholders, so they can have their input in terms of what they want, what they expect to have in their neighborhoods within reason. You know, at the same time, I caution some of our more vocal activists to refrain from trying to paint developers and architects in the pejorative. At the end of the day, we all live in a home that was designed by an architect that was part of a development. So I think we need to, you know, keep our rational hats on when we're looking at this. And I do think that it's important to start with those people who are the customers of your department, Mr. Calvert, who are here to do appropriate allowable things by law, by the rules that we've set forth in the city to their properties. But I do think certainty and clarity is needed for everyone, both for the developer and the architect and the people involved in the construction, as well as the neighbors who want to know when they see something happening in their neighborhood, what that change is, how it's going to impact them, what it will look like. I like the idea of the one-stop shop. I've brought this issue up and I'd like to bring it up again. And a few other folks commented on it recently to me. The Pasadena Permit Rotunda, when you go to Pasadena, there is a circular area where you go into, every department is represented. One of the issues I hear the most about is that, you know, things are in process, but this part has stalled in, you know, water and power or building and safety, or whatever else it may be. And to have all of those in one place, I think, is critical. I don't know physically how we do it, but I challenge you and the rest of staff and city management to figure out a way because I think that's important for people, to be able to go to one place and be able to go from window to window to get answers to their questions. And in terms of the rest of these, I think, look, I wish you could look into all of these. I think that they're all great things to streamline our process and make it easier to build appropriate and acceptable developments in our city. And lastly, I just want to thank Betty Porto for coming. Congratulations on being a UCLA Featured Alumni recently in the UCLA Alumni Magazine. I think I, when I received it, it was online, it was somewhere in my feed. And I saw it and I was very excited to see a fellow Glendale Bruin highlighted. I'll forward it to you. Thank you, Betty. And thank you to staff.
First and foremost, thank you, Mr. Calvert. This report is very thoughtful. I think I've time and again said that over the last 20 years at least, this has been a pain point for me. And the changes that I've seen since you've taken leadership and I've also helped change the culture in this department, I want to commend you for that as well. I have a pretty extensive list of things that I want to go over, but I have some questions initially. The, the counter time, do we have counter time now? And what does that look like?
Councilmember, currently we're by appointment only, we're seven to noon. Part of that challenge is staffing. In order to extend those hours, we would need additional staffing. We do have several vacancies that we're working on filling them.
Well, we had counter time before COVID, right?
We had more staff back then as well.
Do we? Okay. I don't know if how we can expedite that, but that's like one point that I keep hearing about. I had some questions for Ms. Yurka, but she's not here because I wanted to address the letter, but, and the outreach for the stakeholders. I am going to echo what Mr. Kasakian said about who was included. These are the professionals that actually do the work for our residents and our small businesses who deal with it on a daily basis. And I think particularly having their input on how we can make things better is great. I think for phase two, I would love for us to actually reach out to the applicants themselves, the residents and the small business owners themselves. You know, and one of the questions I did want to pose is, for example, even for today, I think with any of the organizations, I think having just several board members speak, I'm interested to know if the membership of those organizations has actually been reached out to, to obtain feedback? And whether or not the things that we were getting are part of a larger commentary that's coming from residents? Or if it's coming from just board members who, you know, have decided that that's what they're going to be proposing? And so I'm really interested in us doing, I know we have data from maybe the last year or two of folks that have tried to get permits. If we can reach out to them, I think directly would, you know, it would be helpful for us to get that feedback. I'm okay with all of it. I don't know, Mayor, how you want to take this. Are we, if we're not saying anything about it, does that mean that, like if we're, if we're saying we're okay with all of it, I don't know how we're going to move forward because I want to make sure that we, everything that's in there gets done. So are we specifically, do we specifically have to say we're okay with XYZ? Or if we're just leaving it out, that means we're in agreement?
Well, I'm going to punt that question to Mr. Calvert to see how he wants to take direction from council.
Mayor, council members, if it's something that's in that report and you do not want to see that as something that we investigate as moving forward again, some of those things do list as in progress because it's kind of low-hanging fruit that's an internal process we knew we could do or we were already doing. But if it's other things that you don't want to see move forward as a study, let us know, we'll take it out. We would seek majority, council majority on that. Anything else, what we're looking for is a wide net. If there are certain things that you have heard from, from applicants, fences, pools, some of the things we listed off here, tell us. We'll put this in a bucket and we will go and study it and find out what's the issue? How can it be changed? How can we either decrease the timeline or even see if it's still necessary?
Okay, so I guess things that you object to, maybe comment, and maybe things that, yeah, that are missing, I think is what you're saying.
Right.
And when I say the missing or whatnot, in terms of that code, we weren't, we didn't want to deep dive in there. We didn't want to presume what you may want to discuss. We have some ideas that we put as a catalyst here, but otherwise, open forum for that.
Okay, so I have only one concern. And it relates to fees and how those fees are assessed with respect to how with respect to how much time the application takes. I want to make sure that we're also safeguarding from creating a system where all of a sudden these fees are exponentially increased for our residents and small business owners. So I know that you're looking into it, but I want to, whatever report you bring back, I want to make sure that that's kind of taken into account. I actually went back and reviewed the April 23, 2023 meeting where I had given this long list publicly, and Councilmember Najarian had actually seconded that item. I was waiting for that to come back, but then I was told that there was no second, that's not how it happened. I went back and looked at it, looked at that meeting, and there was, but I'm going to read it off here, because it matches the discussion here today. So as, as it pertains to general procedural matters, I'd like for us to explore a one-checklist in the beginning. That's cross-departmental. What I hear a lot of times is there's one, there's a checklist, and then things are added continuously to that checklist. Planning should have no more than two reviews to assess plans and give corrections. As a result of the current code, the discretionary approval allows planning to keep requested additional corrections with no limitations. Projects should have strict deadlines with regards to turnaround times. I know you spoke about that, but, for example, building and safety has a 10 to 12 week turnaround, where other cities usually have six. I'd like to see timelines and deadlines specific to the size of the project. So if it's a small project, it should be a couple of weeks, you know, and understanding that larger projects take more time. Cost-to-appeal projects should be increased to a more substantial amount, but with a carve-out for low-income residents. I think I share in your concerns with the individuals and entities that end up filing the appeals. I think that was meant to safeguard low-income communities. You know, I think time and again, I see that that's not the case. So I would like to see those fees increased, but also make sure that we're still safeguarding, creating some process for low-income residents to be able to use that appeal process. The current policy requires a 72-hour, 72 hours to respond. I'd like to see it go down to 24 to 48 hours, and I've made comments to staff before about even the 72 hours on the voicemail just sounds weird. I don't know any, like, other entity you call, they're like, okay, well, and then you call them on Wednesday, folks are out on Friday, and it's like left next week. Looking at the system in Los Angeles, there's four weeks to assign and two weeks to review. The staff there meets every Thursday, they assign work based on hours, and then they collect all the work based on those hours the next Thursday. And then for individual code sections, parking for residential and commercial additions should not trigger additional parking to be required. Look at parking requirements, including tandem parking. For commercial expansion of building use or use, generally requires additional parking and loading spaces for new additional floor areas. Our current codes even list the dimensions for a one-car garage. Would like for you to look at that as well. Fences and walls, setbacks and breakage codes, windows, front doors. I think our current requires that if there's, I'd like to see something where if it's not a structural change, then people are able to just change their doors. Interior setbacks. And then I think one of the other big areas is homes that are in historic districts, allowing them for modest changes, like windows. I've spoken about this before. I think this is not just a cost issue, but also a sustainability issue. You know, the homes that are not actually historic, you have these really small windows where light doesn't come in, and the homeowner's trying to make them larger. It fits with the style of the house, but our like-for-like currently doesn't allow for any changes. I think that's all I have. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. All right.
Who can go next? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm with Betty Porto, my head was exploding, even though I did read, read the entire report a couple of times. This is, you know, this is a report about the possibilities and the pathway to more efficiency in the permitting process, and I thank you for, for the work that's gone into this, because I can see it's a lot. One of, I agree with Mr. Malekian about good applicants should receive an incentive, but I also think that you can devise a system where staff that produces more work also receive an incentive. In other words, this planner over here might do three permits while this planner over here does 10. So the planner that does, gets 10 through the process, I think, should be rewarded for that additional work. I also, you know, I think that the idea of these concurrent reviews are, is really a good idea. It, would it be possible, and I could suggest this, and I don't know how many there are, how many this would involve, but having a weekly meeting of all of the, the different departments that are involved in these maybe complicated projects, or maybe not-so-complicated projects, everybody come together, GWP, Building and Safety, Fire, et cetera, et cetera, and say, okay, these are the projects we're going to look at today, and let's say there might be five of them. Everybody make the decision on those projects, and then move on. And that way, I think that concurrent review would work better than, you know, I don't know how you work it now, how, how does it work now?
Councilmember, what you just described there is actually similar to what we call our DRC process. We use that with our concierge team typically, where we bring in all the different departments, they sit down together, provide a review. That's something we use right now with the concierge team. We would like to move forward so that becomes the standard kind of operation. Again, that, that involves a number of things that, you know, we've kind of outlined here that we would need to kind of put in place or set in motion in order to make happen.
Right. Well, and we've had the concierge and the one-stop, haven't we, in the past? We've used those types of processes, haven't we, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Councilmember Devine, we have had concierge services, and Mr. Calvert is also in the process of actually expanding that service.
Actually, what I, what I, we would look for feedback, maybe at a later date, is how we employ that concierge service with our team. As our deputy director, Mark Berry, has once said, there should not actually be a need for them, right? They're, they're there because we do have a complicated and challenging system. If we correct this, if we fix this and make this more efficient, we would be seeking direction from the council of how do we best use a concierge service then? Is that a fee-based service for expediting a project? Is that something reserved for assisting our small businesses navigating a process? And we're actually looking to that team to help us significantly in this regard. See, as concierge has been their one-stop shop, I think the term has been used, but it hasn't truly been that. And I think that's what we would like to move towards, so that, as Mr. Malekian had referred to, nothing actually has to leave those doors, physically or virtually.
Yeah. I think my husband would like this, but I think he started that in LA, when he was in Building and Safety. I, I also think that the codes have to be updated, there's, there's no question about that. We have semanticated codes and rules, and rules. And remember, we've gotten in this discussion, are these rules, are they guidelines, are they, you know, what exactly are they? So I think that we have to update the codes. Again, fences, pools, parking, all of those, you know, we have to look at in, in review. I think the important thing is to keep it simple, clear language, and consistency. And I think that's a really important, because how many times have we heard that one planner will say one thing, and then we bring it back, and another planner says, no, this is not it, or an inspector, but we need to have consistency? So we need that cross-education in the, in the departments. And I think that's about it for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. So I agree with, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You have one more.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I do not, number one, I do not think the fees should be raised for the appeals. I think 2,000 is, is tough enough for people to, to gather. And number two, I just want everyone to understand, and I asked this question at the briefing, and we've heard it several times today, that in Phase Two, the community, the residents, will be involved in the conversation. And I think the most, the most telling statement that was made this afternoon was, the residents live with the results, and that's important. And so I think since they have to live with the results, they should at least have a say in, in some of this. Not exactly the process, but kind of what, what they want to see from the department and the DRB. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do agree with almost everything that Councilmember Asatrian put forth. I'm not sure when I seconded that, but, okay, but it was, I still agree with all that. So you had a little redlining party on the windows. Did you invite Jay Platt to that party?
Councilmembers, Najarian, we did not. As we learned in our department retreat, what we'd like to start doing to some of these is maybe bringing somebody who works in our department, who maybe is not necessarily an expert, and bring some kind of common sense to it, if you will, in terms of why a checklist is the way it is, because they're going to ask questions that maybe we don't. So Ara and I had a little bit of fun with it. We ultimately will take that back to Mr. Platt, though, and have a discussion to make sure that that is not going to compromise anything. It was more of an exercise of how do we make things easier?
Okay. And I understand that. And I guess the point really is that, that once changes are made at, at the top level, you and the building official, official, that really has to be hand-in-hand with training, everyone down the line, so, and I'm picking on Jay, because Jay's not here. But we get along, we've got a, you know, a repartee. It is something that maybe he's, he's been so used to for so many years, doing it a certain way, that once you change, you know, a code section or an intent issue, that it really needs to be informed, and it needs to be really directed to the, the planner, so they know what the, what the intent is. Some of the things that I have heard, and that I get complaints about, are timing, is that it takes so long for plans to get approved. And I get calls from residents, oh, my plans have been in, in plan check for months and months. So I call the city manager, I'm sure the city manager calls you, I'm sure you called the planner, and I don't know what you say, like, get on this. But what I don't want to happen is for that planner to take what he's working on at the moment, put that aside, and cause a delay for someone else's. So it's my understanding and my sense that the, the applicants aren't so price-sensitive to the cost of submitting plans and getting the plan checks done, that they would much rather pay extra money to make sure that it's done either in the four weeks, or the six weeks, or whatever that is. Because the delay for these people, they've got loans out, they've got, you know, architects, you know, demanding payment, that really, you shouldn't be hindered by cost. I think if there's cost recovery, and you pass that on to the applicants, I think gladly they will take that if they know that it's going to result in a shorter and more certain time for approval, or rejection, or amendment to their, their plans. You know, let's, let's go to the DRB. I want DRB only to deal with things that are in their discretion. If there's a code issue, and they meet the code, that's something that should be just off the table for DRB review, because I don't want, and I've seen in certain, apologies to Mr. Malekian, not when you were on the board, but sometimes DRB gets a life of their own, and they start getting into areas that really are outside the scope of their review process. So we need to tighten their, their focus on what they, what they have. One of the other complaints I hear about is the scheduling of inspectors, and it's only between like 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM, or something unusual like that, that most, most homeowners, unless you're a skilled pro at this, you know, they're, they miss the call, or they don't call in on time, and they lose days trying to get in, and it's very difficult, at times, I've heard, to contact these inspectors, to get them back, to see what, I guess they're scheduling the next inspection date. As far as the public stakeholders go, I mean, there's a room, there's a, an opportunity for the public, but not at this level. These, the true stakeholders in this level are not the public. It's not the guy who lives across from a project. It's the architects, engineers, designers, developers, planners, that are going through our system. At some point, when the plans are revealed, then the public has their chance to get involved in it. So I, I hear what some of the commenters stated, but I just don't think that this is the appropriate, I don't think they have standing, when you're talking about how long plans should be returned. Well, you know, what does my neighbor across the street have to say about how quickly the plans should be returned to me? I don't think anything. Once the plans are approved, and there's a design, of course, they can, they're an integral part in the process. I do want to see an expedited appeal process. If it gets appealed, I think we need to schedule the appeal as quickly as possible. I have seen frivolous appeals that come before us, and I am not opposed to increasing the, the fees for an appeal. I think homeowner groups are free, or they have a deeply discounted, that we used to have? No, it was the same?
Not to my recollection.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry?
John?
No, that's not.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's the same for everyone. Okay. Well, it should be the same across the board. And if it is, you know, if the fee reflects a cost of getting it prepared in an expedited time, I think that should be fully borne by the person making the appeal, because we're not punishing them, where, you know, the appeal fees represent what it costs, first they have to go through the whole thing again, and I've read your appeals reports, and they're very extensive in many ways, and that should be reflected in that. And that, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, we'll have a couple I missed.
Okay.
You want to go first?
You want to? Okay, do yours, and then, and then I'll cut around.
I think one of them, Councilmember Najarian touched on, but the scope of the DRB, I'd like to see something where it's just large projects, or new construction, or more than The, also, we've talked about this, like, who can appeal, especially when it comes to residential remodels and renovations. I'll, I'll see somebody from one side of town come and appeal a project on another side of town. I don't know if that's a state, or a local law that we have, but I think individuals and residents who are actually impacted and live in that area should be the ones that have the opportunity to appeal, and I'm not talking about large projects. And then in Glendale, it seems like we count basements towards the floor area ratio, and I'd like to see you compare some of the other cities. I know Pasadena and Lockingada, for example, don't count that, and then if there is a window and it's certain feet high, they still don't count towards that, and so. And then the last thing was, there's some rule about eight feet for decks as maximum height, looking at that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. So I'll give my comments now, and first of all, thank you for this. I know that there's a lot of work that's been done, and a lot of work to come out of this. I've, you know, for a couple of years now, have been saying, and I think Mr. Galanian will remember how many times I've brought up that, that we really need to go through a process where we clean up outdated codes, we improve our processes, and, and enhance our systems, and- And I'm glad to see we're working on this. I am definitely pro-housing. I want us to be a pro-housing city. I think we need more units, we need more density. I'm not one of those who believes, you know, we're completely built out, and we can't do anything further. I don't think that's true. At the same time, I think where the residents are feeling the pain is the quality of the product that's coming forward. And I think when you listed the primary themes, one of the themes that wasn't there was how to improve the quality of what is being built in the city of Glendale. And I agree with what Councilmember Devine said. I forget exactly how you said it, but, you know, they live with the results. The community members are stakeholders. And I don't, I think there was no reason not to have spoken to them before this came to us now. I think it was just, I don't know, well, I won't characterize it differently, but I am frustrated with that. I expressed that earlier, that it would not have taken much to have a handful of interviews with the people we know, who take a great interest in the quality of what's being built in our city. And that should have been done, and it needs to be done immediately. And until that's done, I would not like us to take any steps forward on the first theme that involves the DRB, and involves questions of the fees for appeals, the scope of the DRB, what projects should be exempt. I don't think any of that should move forward until we've gotten the full set of input. But as for the next three themes, which really have to do with the staffing, you know, you talk about silos, the culture, a culture of getting to a solution, review times, consistency, I'm glad Mr. Malikiin mentioned that, because that's what we hear a lot of, you know, the system, the, all those things you have in your, I think it's Primary Themes Two, Three, and Four, I think we should explore all of those. I support all of those. I guess some are more important than others, and I highlighted ones I thought were the most important. But nonetheless, I think all, everything in those categories really should be pursued. And I'll just underline the staffing question. I think we've heard you on staffing, and we need to do better there, and doing a salary study, and making sure people are not leaving, is extremely important. So I support all of those things. But again, back to Primary Theme One, I think, you know, because this is where the public gets involved, and I think it's just critical that we show the respect due to our residents, to get their input before we start talking in any more detail about the role of the DRB, and the question of fees for appeal. And I will say on the fees, you know, the issue is, $2,000 is a significant amount of money for a neighborhood group to pull together. For somebody that's building, $2,000 is nothing. So I just think that we have to think about it in that context, and I think that that fee is probably where it needs to be. One thing you could maybe come back to us on, and I don't, you know, because I don't know, is how many appeals we've gotten, how many are from residents that are not, you know, building a project, how many are from applicants? I really, I don't know. So I would like to know that. Anyway, that's, I'll say that. As far as the zoning, you know, codes themselves, I think you had somewhere in here about reducing kind of the number of things that need permits, because I hear, and I just, I can't judge, because I don't, you know, experience other cities, but I hear, like, in Glendale, we require a permit for everything. You're putting in a ceiling fan, you're putting in a new toilet, and I don't know what other cities are like, but I would like to definitely look at, you know, if there are a lot of these, like, little things that really don't matter that much, that we could, you know, not require permits for those items. So I'll just put that one out there. Let's see, increase fees. I'm just looking around some of the notes I have here. Okay, cost of appeals. Yeah. I do like the one-stop-shop idea. So I'll just end with the last of the themes, which was, you know, ideas for changes in our codes that could, you know, allow us to get to where we want to be, which is, you know, more housing, and meeting our arena numbers. So I like the idea of looking at our parking requirements, and trying to modernize those. I also would really like us to look at our use of dwelling units per acre, because I think that that limits density. And we have many cases where we have a building of a certain size, and, you know, the size, the form is really what people experience that live in a community. How many units are in that particular form is not really that important. So if a developer can put more units in the same box, with smaller units, to me, that's good, that's a good thing, as long as, you know, the market, you know, is there for units of those sizes. So I would really like us to see if we can move away from that as being a metric that we use, to try to, you know, develop more housing. I would also like us to really look at how we can change zoning codes in some of our residential areas, our single-family areas, to allow for more missing middle housing. There are some areas of Glendale, if you look around, and I don't know if this is pre-war or immediately post-war, when these were built, but sometimes you'll walk down a street, and it's single-family houses, and you'll walk by one, and if you look closely, you'll see there are two mailboxes, there are two front doors, but it's really pretty much the same form that you see in the single-family houses alongside it. And that's a way we could create more density, but it is compatible with the, kind of, the forms in that, in that single-family neighborhood. And it would potentially create more opportunities for homeownership at an entry level, because, you know, the ability for many people to afford a large, single-family house is already gone. So I would like to see if, you know, we're very, we know, and this is not just us, but everywhere, we know, you know, how to build single-family homes, we know how to build large apartment buildings, and, you know, you and I have talked about this, we're not very good with what's called missing middle, these duplexes, fourplexes, small garden apartments, things like that, which could fit very well into areas that are generally low-density now. You mentioned pre-approved ADU designs. I think we should see what we can do, even if it's not going to have a huge impact. If we could streamline the production of ADUs, I think that would be a good thing. ADUs are something that are not going to solve the housing crisis, but could contribute in a significant way. So I think those are all the things. Oh, I was going to mention the thing about basements also, but Councilmember Asatrian got to it first. So I think that covers everything I have.
Mayor Brodmann, I know that you mentioned that there's two areas that you don't want to explore now.
Well, one, Primary Theme One.
Well, Primary Theme One, but then you were specific about the DRB and the fees.
Yeah, right.
I mean, we are, this is the moment where we're actually going to be doing outreach to stakeholders, including residents.
Right.
So why do you have an issue with reaching out to residents about this process?
No, I think we, I don't. I think we should have done it before, and we should do it now, but we have specific things in the report, like reducing those, increasing those fees. That is a suggested, or a possible solution, right? I don't want to be, I don't want to sit here now and say, "I accept that as a possible solution," before we've done that outreach. So that's what I'm saying.
They're going to be going and posing that to the stakeholders, correct me if I'm wrong, whether or not that is a solution that we're going to actually get back or not. Correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, it's correct. What's in this report, and if I didn't spell this out clearly enough, these are not proposals. These are comments, this is feedback that we have heard from the stakeholders that were interviewed. They are possibilities to move forward, and what we would do is move from here, kind of compartmentalize these into different categories, come back, and then ask you for your feedback if to move forward with them or not, based on the consequences of those. Like, we can come back, we can look at, say, an appeal fee, and we can see, okay, what did other cities do? If council wants to look at it, are there different structures? Would you like to entertain this? If so, now we'll go do public engagement. If there are changes that are being considered for DRB, we would do that then. I mean, based on the comments, and what we've discussed internally, what we discussed here, we're talking more about putting together checklists and things like that to make sure that the DRB stays within that purview, not about changing necessarily their scope. Councilmember Asatrian, what you brought up, that is something that would be broader. We would need to take a look at the consequences of that, have that conversation with council, and then the consideration would be, okay, let's go to public now that this is maybe a tenable idea. Right now, we don't even know if those are tenable ideas that would even work, let alone the public engagement part.
I mean, you have potential solutions, increase fee for appeal, revise the Design Review Board's scope, which I think we all understand means narrow the Design Review Board's scope. So those are two things that I think you've already said are potential solutions, yet we have not even had that initial conversation with the community. So I think, I don't want to go ahead and say, you know, "I sign on to those as potential solutions." I think we need to do that outreach first, that we should have already done before coming here today, and then come back to us to discuss that.
And I would turn to the council for that perspective, if that's what the council desires, and that's how we move forward, so.
I respectfully disagree, Mayor. I think this is our opportunity for us to clean up codes, and to look at our processes, and to hinder that progress in exploring when there is a commitment to stakeholders and outreach, just makes no sense to me.
Well, I think we should just throw it out there. I mean, what we want is their input, so here's something that's out there, tell us what you think about it.
Okay, but let's start from, let's start from ground zero, not starting from, here are potential solutions.
Mayor, councilmembers, I mean, honestly, there's nothing I could really engage in the public with, because I don't know what those potential solutions could be from that category, until we've gone and investigated it. That's what we're asking from the council now. Is this something you want us to look at? We would come back with, here's things we could potentially do, and then take those to the public, and say, "Are any of these satisfactory," if you will?
Mayor, and Councilmember Devine, I'm sorry, I saw your hand go up first. So I think that, well, I believe that we do need to include the public when it comes to the DRB process, because that is a process in which, if it's a public meeting, the whole purpose of the public meeting is to have the public involved. And I think that by working with the associations, with different neighborhoods, and even those areas where, you know, some parts of our city don't have associations and neighborhoods, and some of them are the most severely impacted, so finding ways to reach out to those neighborhoods and areas where there isn't an organization is critical for them to have some input, and to have some understanding as to how the process works, what suggestions they may have for their neighborhoods. So I want to insist that we do include the public in this process, and understand what recommendations and ideas they may have. I mean, some of these associations have been dealing with appeals for decades, and issues in their neighborhoods in decades. So I think we cannot, and should not, ignore the residents' voices in this.
And I will say that none of the things that would move forward that have anything to do with design, development standards, DRB, all of that would be put before the public. The goal here is to find out what we want to investigate, to put before the public, and get their input on. Right now, I kind of have a clean slate with some ideas. We need to go back and vet these, and figure out what's even possible, and then be able to put that out to the public, with council's considerations as well. These are kind of loose, ambiguous, large-scale ideas. We need to kind of work through a process to refine it, and anything related to design, development standards, that, all of that goes to the public, because they do have that say in terms of the designs.
So why don't we come to motion time? There's obviously different positions. Mr. City Attorney, what, this is to give direction?
To give direction, that's the motion. Somebody needs, but you need to, somebody needs to put some parameters on it, because you're right, we have heard different.
I mean, there are only two areas that, excuse me.
Go ahead.
There's only two areas that there's disagreements in, right? I hear from Mayor Brodmann on the fees, I also heard it from Councilmember Devine, so what would you need from us?
Somebody to make a motion to include those items, or exclude them, and then you can go forward on the motion.
And I'm sorry, I apologize, I was in the back room, I was only hearing parts of this. I did, by the way, agree, I believe, Councilmember Asatrian, you mentioned something about basements, FARs. I do second that, I do agree with that. We should look at what other cities are doing and model that, but I missed the points that were brought up by the mayor and others.
Well, I was, I was just saying that we, because we have not made any effort to get input from the residents, that I'm concerned about taking on some of these potential solutions, one of which is to basically narrow the scope of what the DRB does, and the other is to increase appeal fees. And I think that before we start moving forward with either of those two, we should solicit the community's input, and then see if, you know, then see what we want to do there.
But why can't those both be done concurrently? I, that's the one thing I struggle with.
They can, as long as we're approaching it, you know, I mean, we should have talked to people, we should have done community.
Absolutely, but what's done is done, and we do need to now circle back.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to say I support increasing appeal fees, or narrowing the scope of the DRB at this stage.
If I may, if I may, what I'm hearing is.
Your comments on.
Go figure out how that would even work.
Mayor, perhaps I can provide, make a couple of comments, and provide some clarification. So the way that this process is planned is that you provide general direction, some councilmembers provided a more detailed list of directions. Staff and Mr. Calvert's team will go back and provide some responses to those asks. Some of them are not tenable. We have to consult with our legal staff, we have to consult with our finance department when it comes to increasing fees, and items such as that. And then we bring all of those back, and provide a report, which will include potential DRB changes. Now, at that meeting, you, as council, can direct staff to say, "No, we don't want to make any changes to the DRB processes," and Mr. Calvert will cross that out. And after all of that, that we have pinned down all the things that can be done, or we have received the direction from council, then we'll take it out to the public for their feedback.
If I may, I think that's backwards. I think that's backwards. I think the public should be involved in the DRB process and the fees before.
You are correct, Councilmember Devine. However, we don't have the details of what those are entailed, right? So we have to bring that back to council, correct me if I'm wrong, to get specific direction on those list of items that we'll have to take to the public.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember, otherwise, I'm going to go into a public meeting and say, "Do you want me to change DRB, yes or no?"
No, no.
I have nothing else I can give them, because I don't have enough, I don't have enough that we put together or investigated what the potential options are, right? If I start changing the scope of DRB, there could be larger implications. We need to go research that and look at that. It may be something as simple as changing checklists, or maybe certain smaller projects get removed, but we need to go and see what's possible, and bring back those possibilities to the council. And then, at that point, that's kind of the next level of detail. Counselors, you know what, yeah, we are interested in this, take this out for public consumption, and let's start to investigate deeper into it.
That makes no sense to me.
We've got to frame the question, though.
Hold on, hold on a second. It makes no sense, because you've gone out to the development community, just asking, "What are your pain points?", and you've gotten feedback. All I'm saying is now, go out to the residents, and ask them what their pain points are, get that feedback, and then you can do some work. You're not going out to them and saying, "Here are some solutions." You're just showing them the same courtesy that you already showed the development community, which is, which is fine. I mean, it's fine that you went and talked to the development community, but I think you need to have that same kind of conversation, it's ground level, it's, "Give us your input, listen." And then, and then you can start to work on developing solutions.
If I may, just, what I see as a disconnect is that the assignment given to CDD was to go out and look at ways to improve the process for the customers. So if that was, that was the, if that was the task, and he brought that forward to you, and now you've kind of, you have some direction on things you'd like to look at, it makes, I think what we're struggling with is to go to the public and ask them, or go to the residents and ask them, what would go to the residents and ask them, what would you like to see of these items before staff has had a chance to actually put a little bit more detail on some of these points? There's nothing for the public to react to, per se. And with that, I would just say that, again, everything here is contingent upon coming back to the council and going to the public. So, I mean, it's up to the council ultimately what you want to provide direction on, but nothing will get done until it comes back to council, staff does the work, comes back to council, goes to the public, and then, even then, you're talking about more hearings. That's just preliminary feedback before you even get into the drafting and the hearings and all that, that would have to take place to make any of this feasible. So I leave it to the council, but that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at at this point.
Mayor, we're literally, we're literally asking if, for this to be a discussion point, or to be considered, we're not, we're not approving it, we're not.
No, I, I understand, but what you're saying, what we're saying is staff is going to go and continue to work on these possible solutions without having spoken to these community members.
No, the, the staff is going to go.
We're going to define what the possible solutions are, we don't have possible solutions, we need to figure out what they are so that we can put that in front of the public, who are not experts in this, like the first batch of people that we interviewed, so that they have a context to actually work with. That's the goal here, is to give them a context to start from, right now, we don't have that, and we're seeking that direction today to develop that context, based on the feedback you've given us here.
They are, they, there are experts in our community, have been working on this stuff for decades.
Absolutely, and there are also lots that are not, and all of them are going to be coming to the table at that point, and we need to have a conversation, we need technical and non-technical information for them to all be able to be able to participate, because otherwise, we've, we're only asking residents who are architects.
But, Mayor.
Yes.
But, at that point, after you've given us your report, and we've given you the feedback, and then you take it to stakeholders, they can, they, that's when they can get involved, give their decisions, I mean, their opinions, their statements, and then that'll come back to us and we can look at it.
Absolutely.
So, they will, they will have their voices heard eventually.
That is exactly how it would work, if we came up with 10 things, we'd take those out, get their feedback, come back to the, the council with the feedback from the public on those.
It'll be late in the game, I think it's disrespectful, but if that's what my colleagues want to do, then we'll go forward that way.
I think you're mischaracterizing that, Mayor.
I think it's disrespectful to talk to, to certain people and exclude others who are important stakeholders in this process, I think that is just disrespectful, but it sounds like that's okay with everybody.
Well, look, it's not a matter of it being okay with everyone, it's not, I, I don't agree, I think that we needed to include some of the folks that are involved in the DRB process, both former members of the DRB, but as well as, I, I think, staff should have been able to look at all our DRB hearings and get a snapshot of who's involved in it, which homeowner groups have had the most appeals or issues, or have appeared before and participated in DRB meetings, and I think that's where you get the stakeholder aspect of it, right? These are people who have skin in the game, who are involved in getting their input and saying, okay, well, what went well in that process, in that hearing, what didn't go well, what could have gone well or better? So, Mayor, I, I agree with you in some respects, but I also think that we need to find a way to move forward in this process, bring in the public, not treat some of these people that have more of a stake in it than the general vox populi in the public, and say, okay, well, now you are going to have a seat at the table, we want to hear from you specifically. I don't think that should take long, I don't think it's asking for much from staff to do that, and I think that it does extend the courtesy to some of our more vocal members of the public.
And, and we're literally talking about three to five people.
Why are we talking about, who are these three to five people?
Yeah, that seems very specific.
That's what you've done on the development side, you've gone out to specific stakeholders.
No, we, we extended several more invitations.
How many people did you speak to?
A total of 58 invitations went out, I believe about 16 or so for staff, others were everyone from TGHS themselves, to the development communities, business owners, people who've done TIs, people who've done ground-up large developments, small developments, medium developments.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move alternative one.
Second.
With.
Rather than stating as alternative, it's, it's a motion to direct staff to look at the items raised in the report, as well as items raised by the council members in today's meeting for analysis.
And are we all in agreement on moving forward on those two items, or?
Yeah.
So I'm excluding those comments from the motion.
What comment?
Right, like the, they are going to move forward with the DRB.
And the fees.
And the fees.
Yes, correct, that's, that's your motion.
Okay, so that's my motion.
As, as long as part of that motion is the fact that staff will immediately engage those individuals who have participated in DRB hearings the most from the public side, whether that's homeowners association, specific neighborhood groups, go back, do an assessment of your meetings, pull out individuals or groups that you feel have most involvement, and talk to them.
I mean, I, I hadn't included individuals, our residents and small business owners who applied for permits, applicants themselves.
Applicants is fine, but I, I believe that there's neighborhood associations as well that need to be included. If you're in agreement with that, I would support it.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Before we take a vote, I do want to comment that if there are lists, I'm very concerned about who these three or five people are, and if there are, if there's something happening behind closed doors here, so I'd like to be informed of who the people are going to be.
Well, I think it's important for staff, I, I think it's important for council to know who the individuals are.
Okay.
So, is the motion, just to clarify, is it that staff will reach out to community stakeholders now, or not until this comes back to council again?
I, I would say, I would support a motion that included, that supported including them now.
Okay, are you okay with including them now, before this comes back? Councilmember Asatrian, it's your motion.
No, that's not where we were.
That's not, no.
That's not, that's not the motion, that's not what I seconded, so, that's a separate motion. If you want to make a substitute motion, that's certainly.
Are you, are you suggesting that, that those two items specifically come back separately, or they, can they be reviewed and included with whatever Mr. Calvert has proposed today?
I think the two of them can be done in tandem. I think that staff can work on whatever recommendations they have to improve, or streamline, or adjust the DRB process, while a conversation is happening with, whether it's the homeowners' coordinating council, neighborhood associations, anyone who's been involved in the DRB processes, appeals, public speaking, and, and ask them what their suggestions are as well.
That would.
But he said he can't do that, he says the question isn't framed yet, you can't just throw it out.
How can the question not be framed if those people have already participated in those processes? If someone has been in a DRB meeting, I've never been to a DRB meeting as a participant or as a speaker, but there are people in this community who have, and you have a snapshot of what those meetings entailed, there's got to be some pattern.
Did you guys upset Kathy Yurka or something? Because this seems to be, with all respect, driven by Kathy Yurka at this point.
I, I.
I haven't heard from anyone else, Damian Sullivan maybe.
I mean, you know.
This isn't, you guys were not cutting anyone out of the, out of the equation, we're giving them a better chance to give input.
Okay.
But not at this point, we have to hear back from staff. He said he can't go, what's he going to present? He can't present anything, DRB.
But he already presented this, and he got feedback from lots of people about DRB. He, he spoke to however many, however many people that were invited.
The question, the question at hand is.
Let's just vote on this.
Hold on, the question at hand is, do we want to look at our design review process, Mayor? Do you want us to look at our design review?
Yes, but I would like to speak to a broad range of stakeholders first.
Okay, so, in order for that conversation to take place, we would need to give that okay in order for that conversation to take place. So, are you okay with us reviewing our design review process?
As long as we get stakeholder input before it comes back to us.
Are we getting stakeholder input before it comes back to us?
Mayor, council members, the intent was to come back with what the possibilities were, council would inform us what you believe still fits the council's vision, and then we would take those to the community and find, get their input. Essentially, we don't want to put something out to the community, if I were to come up with, say, 10, 15 different alternatives, of changes we can make, that ultimately is not tenable to the council. We would like to get council's direction on where you see possible investigation, improvements, changes, or none at all, and maybe that's what we take to the public, but I think having that kind of frame for the conversation is important. We did not go and talk and present to any stakeholders, we interviewed, or we invited them to be interviewed in an open forum, they were provided five prompts from our consultant in a confidential manner, so that they could speak openly and freely. I will say that if you would like to move this up in terms of when they interview residents, and if we're going to add additional stakeholders, I will be coming back to you with a contract amendment, because this was not part of the original plan, it was not part of the original scope, and it will delay things.
Call the question.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second?
Yes, there was a motion and a second.
Yeah, why are you looking at me? What do you, what do you expect me to do? First of all, if you're going to call the question, calling the question requires a second, and then requires a vote to see if the question is brought up, you know, I mean, it sounds like you guys have the votes, so it's okay to do it. To say that there's a, the consultant will have to have their contract increased, and to have that be somehow this, this tactic that we won't be able to do this in time, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing well. I'll tell you this much, that part of the issue is, it's not that our DRB process doesn't need improvement, or that we can't improve upon it, we can always improve all our processes, but the question is, what sort of buy-in do you get from the public, whom we're all elected to serve, if we don't include them, at least in the most elementary initial phases of this process? It's fine to include, and by the way, I don't want to single out any individuals, Councilmember Najarian, because at least one of those is a commissioner that sits on here, may have not been appointed by you, but they serve the public on their own time, so let's at least extend that courtesy. I haven't gone after anyone else's appointments or any of our commissioners, and I don't think it's appropriate for us to do that, but, here's what I would say, that I think it's important for us to at least have conversations with individuals, whether we agree with them or not, as to what their ideas and, and suggestions may be on this process. How difficult is it to do that?
The point well taken.
I have a second to calling the question.
If I may, before you take votes, so there are two ways we can do this, right? And we, we are not refusing to meet with the residents, the property owners, actually, three ways we can do this. So what we, staff already has done is interviewed our customers, right? So if council's desire to go and interview the residents, that's one way of doing it. It's going to prolong the process, but be as amay, or we can take direction, as we discussed, staff will do the research, bring back an item with all the details, right now, we're saying potential solutions, but we don't know what those solutions are, so we'll enumerate those potential solutions. Council can say, out of that 10 solutions related to the DRB process, we agree with five, go ahead and meet with the stakeholders on these five or six or however many. Or, council directs us, go ahead, and before you bring this back to council regarding those two points, DRB process and the fees, appeal fees, go do the outreach first, and then they come back.
I would be okay with the third one.
So doing the outreach first.
On those two items.
On just those two items, yes.
That's one way of doing it.
Yes, I would support that. Fine, but I would need you to amend your motion.
Again, before we do that, we need to amend, we're not saying that that's going to be a deterrent, but that's a process we have to go through.
So you're separating.
Because this is something addition.
Oh, wait.
And we have to decide.
When we say, and go interview, because I think initially, your, your report stated that you're going to be doing public engagement and outreach, is, is the interview's different than the public engagement and outreach you were talking about?
Public engagement outreach will be handled by staff, as we have a, a better understanding of what those changes are, because we know the local code better than the consultant was, the consultant was brought in to do those interviews.
And after, after we get approval and direction from council when we come back, so that'll be outreach, but if council wants us to go through the same process that staff did with customers, then that's a different process.
If I can add, this is very similar, you're, you're going to see an item tonight for the Vision Zero, we develop a project development team, we seek approval, or we move forward with certain interviews and input, and then they give us concepts, we then take that out to the public, this is, it, it's the exact same process of actually how we do just about every planning initiative, is that we have a smaller subset to start with, before we take concepts to a broader realm, and that's exactly what we're doing here. And we do the same thing, we come back to council, we check in before we take those things out to the broader public, based on what we've heard from that smaller group, and that's the same process here.
So, I mean, if staff's going to be doing it, what's the issue with that, Mr. Kasakian, do you have an issue with that?
With staff doing it? I don't have a problem with staff doing it, absolutely, as long as we get the report.
Yeah.
The interviews?
Yeah.
I would say that that is done in a very different manner than, than what the others were, those were done by an outside consultant, the answers were kept confidential, so that they could speak freely regarding policies and things of that nature, we would not be affording them the same thing.
Then let me ask you this, in, in order of fairness for anonymity, or whatever else to protect that, how much more would it cost to have that, have the consultant interview 10 additional people?
Excuse me, I'd have to talk to the consultant about that and, and see what that would take.
I mean, I'd be interested in that, and if each council person wants to recommend two people in the public for them to have a conversation with, I'm happy with that as well.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you, why don't we just cut out the middle man here? And we all know who we're talking about as council members, the people that are invested, are engaged in the DRB processes, why don't we just talk to them individually? I can talk to three or four of them, you can talk to the same ones, get their feedback and bring it back to council. Bring it to council, we give it to you, and then they take it out to the rest of the stakeholders or the rest of the residents that want to be involved. In other words, we just do what we do, we do our, our own outreach, we do our own communications with the residents, we call them, we email them, what do you think, what are your ideas, give me your feedback, and then we bring it back, and eventually it gets back to them what is decided.
Can I just say, Councilmember Devine, to all my colleagues, look, at the end, whatever is brought forth, there may be recommendations from whether it's the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council or other associations, look, I've had my disagreements with them, they've certainly had their disagreements with me, but I think unless we engage these individuals, these groups, which are in these chambers more often than other groups, and others in our city, whether it's Glendale Tenants Union and others, it gives appearance that we have our thumbs on the scale for one party, sure, they're the customers, but these are individuals that we're also elected and obligated to serve, that at the end of the day, everything that community development does and approves is for the totality of our city, and I don't think it's asking for much to include this process. I don't know how long it'll take, I don't think you'll have as long of a conversation as you may with, with the policy or, or the area experts who are in your department every day with applications, but I, I think that it's a better process, Councilmember Devine, than us individually going and then bringing it back. I think that's going to happen regardless at the end, as, as we move forward in something that we will vote and approve of.
So I got a pretty clear letter from the Verdugo Woodlands.
Yeah.
With some specifics in it, I got a pretty clear letter from, not as, not as well-written by the Homeowners Coordinating Council, I think.
And there were a couple of them.
I think we know, we know what they're, you know, where they're going, we're not, we read those letters, by the way, sometimes more than once, and I think we know where the public is coming from. I just don't want to delay this, that's the only reason.
All I'm saying is meet with those individuals, whether it's the people that wrote those letters, or if they think that there's someone else that didn't write a letter, and just have that conversation with them and bring it forth.
But they are going to, Councilmember Kasakian, I don't think anybody is trying to leave the, the, the residents out.
My understanding is that there will be a public session, and I don't want them to be part of a general open charrette type, where they're all at, at a community center, and they're mixed in with everyone else.
That is not how we would connect the public engagement. We would meet with those groups independently, each neighborhood association, if that's, that's what's necessary, it would be a standard public engagement if there were concepts put forth. We would, I mean, yes, there will be some sort of town hall at some point for broader residents, but we would be meeting with the homeowners association, and Verdugo Woodlands, and those that are interested, not just one giant meeting, we would need to have a smaller forum to get good feedback, so.
Okay, let's move on, it's 5:30.
So where are we?
There's a pending motion on the floor, made by Councilmember Asatrian, seconded by Councilmember Najarian, unless somebody wants to amend it or substitute it.
Councilmember Kasakian, are you okay with?
How has it been amended?
It hasn't, so I'm saying, there's been suggestions, but right now, it's, that's the motion on the floor.
Do you want to add, would you not be supporting this unless you add your own amendment to that?
My, my amendment, yes, I wouldn't support it as a. My amendment, yes, I wouldn't support it as it is, because I do think that we need to have an amendment that incorporates some of the groups and individuals that have already written to us, and anyone else that has had an opportunity to be in front of or participate in DRB meetings. Again, whether we agree with them, or whether I agree with them or not.
In, in the format of these interviews, or in?
If it's, if it's, if staff can do it, as long as the questions are similar or same, I'm fine with staff doing it.
I mean, we are capable of doing it, and just note that it is being done differently. Also, it's not that we don't want their opinion or think that it's a different opinion. It's not that at all. It's we were looking at people who regularly go through as a customer, what this entitlement process is like, because the original question was, why are things taking so long? Why are they so difficult? Getting that feedback from them there. Now we have concepts to make that better, let's go talk to the public if those concepts impact something in the public, right? I'm not going to go to the public with a checklist for my internal staff to work with, but I will go to them. If there's a proposal or consideration to change DRB, to change a development standard, we have to have their input, absolutely. So it's not any attempt to evade them, it's to get the input of the people who go through this every single day at our counters and through our intergov system, and meet with our planners and building and safety people.
That's satisfactory. I mean, how's this any different than any of the other outreach that we do? Including, I mean, Mr. Calvert brought up Vision Zero tonight. May it be similar? No one's trying to leave the public out, so, Mr. Kasakian?
Yeah, let's just call for a vote.
With, but, no, wait, what's the motion?
Well, you want to repeat your motion?
Um.
Would you repeat, repeat your motion?
So include all, everything that staff wanted, as well as all the comments from all the council members, with the exception of the DRB and the fees mentioned by Mayor Bautman and Councilmember Devine.
So meaning those would be included?
No. They would be excluded.
Oh, okay.
Excluded?
No, you want those included.
Want those included as the package, rather than peeling them off.
Right.
Right. Well, no, I said exclude the comments.
Oh, right. So you're saying, and by virtue of doing that, including them in the review that staff will perform, okay, got it.
Okay, so roll call.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Stain.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bautman?
No.
Okay, motion passes. All right. Next is adjournment. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Now we got to go to closed session. Do we have time?
I don't know how you.
Well, there's.
I don't know.
There's a liability case, right?
Yeah, there's one liability case, and then the.
I don't know if you guys want to read them real quick, because I have.
Okay.